Call the meeting order, please. Call roll.
Mr. Brooly?
Here.
Mrs. Escalante?
Here.
Dr. McFadden? Mr. Monk?
Yeah.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, the citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with your comments, questions, concerns. Be mindful that you may not receive a response of your inquiries tonight. Also be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries or your statements. And last but not least, I ask that you address your comments to the chair. The floor is now open for citizens' comments. Second call, citizens' comments. Third call, citizens' comments. Ms. Stevens, would you like to come up to the microphone? She will be making some presentations to students of Mount Clemens High School who participated in a program that she was highly involved in, and we'll let her talk about it and the young man that she's going to present to.
Good evening. On behalf of our former special agent in charge of the FBI Detroit District, I'd like to make a presentation on his behalf. They were involved in their testing, and he was involved in getting ready to retire at the end of January, which was very sudden. But these young men spent a day at Wayne Community College as part of a youth event and conversation put on by the FBI Community Outreach and ALPAC. And ALPAC is an alliance of law enforcement and community groups coming together to create trust, and everything from FBI, ICE, Department of Immigration, and all the rest. And sometimes we have to hear from our youth, and a lot of times we leave them out of that scenario. And as his last weeks were chaotic, as well as the students with tests, these could not be presented before he retired at the end of January. I stand here today to present these certificates on behalf of the FBI Community Relations Outreach and David Gelios, the former FBI Special Agent in Charge, to Aaron Davis, Darren Downing, and Levi Petty. And I'd like to thank them for their service. Mr. Petty? Can you stand where they can see your... Mr. Davis?
Could you read what they said?
Certificate of recognition awarded to Darren Downing for engagement in the FBI's Community Outreach Program, awarded this 31st day of January 2018. Special Agent in Charge, David P. Gelios. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's why we have to get our youth involved in law enforcement, because a lot of times when people, even adults, hear the word FBI, they think, "Oh, wow," you know. But there are programs, and I'm trying to get them to come into this district to become a part of, you know, educating our kids that it's more to the FBI than fear. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to the young men.
And thank you, Ms. Ruthie. I'd like to read a statement from the high school principal. He had another engagement and gives his regrets for not being able to be here. But he says, "On behalf of the staff of Mount Clemens High School, I'd like to echo our appreciation of these three exceptional young men. Levi, Darren, and Aaron have consistently gone above and beyond with regard to being active in the community, as well as becoming remarkable change agents among their school peers. To paraphrase the great Langston Hughes, life for them has not been a crystal stair, but they have used their personal struggles to mature into strong young men. These are our go-to guys whenever we need something accomplished or communicated, and they have never let us down. They have all demonstrated an atypical level of compassion, integrity, and commitment to leaving this world a little better than how they found it. Thank you for this recognition."
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I want to pull an item up under policies. Do we wait till we get to that?
Yes.
Or you want to do it then?
Yeah, we wait till that.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, are the approval of minutes. A, minutes of the January 17th, 2018 organizational meeting. And item B, minutes of the January 17th, 2018 regular meeting.
So move?
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Second by Ms. Walker. Any questions on the minutes? Are the minutes any corrections? Yes, sir.
Yes, I believe that the minutes of the regular meeting, you know, after the organizational meeting, it's got a call to order by President Jason Monk. I believe at that point you were the president. And I think in my comments... Well, that's all right. I'll let that go. It's just grammar.
Any additional corrections? Mr. Brooly?
Just trying to figure out, was I absent on the 17th?
No, sir. You were here, because we were back on the other side.
That's what I thought, but it says here, absent.
All right, but I see you in the vote count.
No, on the page nine.
Ditto. Me either.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, we got the corrections? Any additional corrections?
And I was here also because I voted. I just looked at my calendar and went, "January 17th, I missed it?"
No, both of you were here.
Awesome.
Everyone was here.
Everyone was here.
Any additional corrections? Seeing none, would the mover like to make the motion to be as corrected? Move to approve the minutes as corrected?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the minutes as corrected pertaining to the attendance on the minutes.
About the seconded, Ms. Walker. So the motion is moved by Mr. Monk, seconded by Ms. Walker, to approve the minutes of the organizational meeting and the regular meeting as corrected. Any additional questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. Next, item seven, policies for second reading. Mr. Monk, you wanted to...
I thought it was bills for payment.
Oh, you're right. I did skip. You're right. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Next, item six, bills for payment. The chair would entertain a motion.
Also move?
Moved by Mr. Voorhees to approve the minutes, I mean correction, the bills for payments. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next, now we get to the policies for second reading. Mr. Monk?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to remove policy 8340 for, from the second reading to review more so we can have the proper language put in.
Eighty-three.
And we'll bring that for the second reading at our next board meeting.
Which is that?
Last one.
Last one.
K, I'm sorry. Policy K, eighty-three seven, eighty-three forty.
So the easy way would be for you to move the Senate back to committee.
Okay. All right, yes, I'll move the Senate back to committee for further review.
It's been moved by Mr. Monk to send policy eighty-three forty, letters of reference, back to the committee for further review and recommendation, bring forth recommendation at a later date.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Voorhees. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
These are on adopting all the policies?
This is, he's asking to remove K.
Yeah, just for that one.
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, back to item seven, which is the approval of the second, the second reading of the policies.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
She didn't get, Ms. Escalante didn't, she didn't call Miss Escalante's name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yes.
The motion still carries. Okay, we are at the reading, second reading of the policies, and the second reading is when we adopt policies. How would the board like to do it? Individually, or the chair of the committee can make recommendations, or?
I can do, I can make.
How you want to do?
I can make recommendations. Okay. All right, Mr. President, I recommend that we accept policies, and I'll just go down a list of them, we can come up them all together. We'll, A, policy fourteen twenty-one, thirty-one twenty-one, forty-one twenty-one, criminal history record check revised, new revised. B, policy fourteen thirty-nine, thirty-one thirty-four, forty-one thirty-nine, administrative staff discipline, new revised. C, policy twenty-four ten, prohibition of, can I pronounce that right? Prohibition? Prohibition of referral and associates, new. D, policy twenty-four fourteen, reproductive health and family planning, revised. E, policy twenty-four eighteen, sex education, new. F, policy fifty-six thirty point zero one, staff seclusion and restraint replacement. G, policy seventy-five forty point zero three, seventy-five forty point zero four, and seventy-five forty point zero five, student staff, district technology, acceptance, use, and safety, including safety arrangements for each, revised. H, policy seventy-five forty point zero six, district used student email account, new. I, policy eighty-one forty-two, criminal history check, revised. J, policy eighty-three twenty-one, criminal justice information security, non-criminal justice agency, revised.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Any additional questions on the motion on the floor? And the motion on the floor is to approve policy fourteen twenty-one, thirty-one twenty-one, forty-one twenty-one, criminal history record check. Policy fourteen thirty-four dash thirty-one thirty-nine slash forty-one thirty-nine, administration staff discipline, which is new. Policy forty-one ten, prohibition of referral of associates, new. Policy D, twenty-four fourteen, reproductive health and family planning, revised. Policy E, twenty-four eighteen, sex education, new. Policy fifty-six thirty point zero one, student seclusion and restraint replacement. Policy G, fifty-four twenty point oh, fifty-four, seventy-five forty point oh three, seventy-five forty point zero four, seventy-five forty point zero five, staff, student staff, district technol, technology, acceptable use and safety, revised. H, policy seventy-five forty point six point zero six, district used student email account, new. J, policy eighty-one forty-two, criminal history check, revised. And policy eighty-three twenty-one, criminal justice information security, non-criminal justice agency, revised. Any additional questions on the, Mr. Monk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And this is for Madam Superintendent. I know we had talked about the checklist to be used when considering suspension and expulsion of a student. Is that in place as we, right now, or is that something that needs to be put into place?
We will put that into place after the board approves all of it.
Okay, because I feel that this is, you know, in light of what just happened in Florida, I think this form is really pertinent to what we need to do going forward.
Absolutely. Yes, so it's very timely.
Yes, thank you.
Any additional questions, comments on the motion? Mr. Brooly?
We can do this all as a package. I just want to be listed as, now, I'm not going to vote against it, but I just want to be listed as not voting on two of them, so when it comes to that.
All right.
Just abstaining.
Any additional questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes, yes, on all abstain on twenty-four ten and fourteen thirty-nine.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, do you add an addition to the agenda for informational?
Yes, I didn't list the curriculum update.
Okay.
And that will be the first item that we look at.
Okay.
Under information items.
The chair would move to amend the agenda to reflect additional information item being the curriculum update. I'll move it.
Oh, you was looking for a motion?
Yeah. The chair would entertain a motion. I didn't want to deal with it tonight. Okay, move by Mr. Monk. Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Are there additional questions on the motion on the floor to amend the agenda to add a curriculum update? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Second it, I'm sorry.
It was Mr. Monk and Ms. Escalante.
Escalante, okay.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. The agenda is now amended. Item, informational items, let's call it eight A, curriculum update. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. We have been diligently working to ensure that our students receive the best education that they can here in Mount Clemens, and we're fortunate to have some really talented staff on, in the district. So with that, our curriculum coordinator, Mrs. Elizabeth Jensen, who is also the co-principal over at Seminole, will present the board with an update as where we are today. So, move out a little bit.
So on your desk, you have the packet that I'll be presenting. Hoping my clicker will work. Uh-oh. All right, I'm seeking assistance from Ms. Pinkett to help me click. Because it's not working. And no, it doesn't work. Yeah, I do. Thank you. It was working before we started. Go ahead. I don't know. There you go. Okay. So here's just an overview of what I am going to be talking about. We're going to talk about the student counts, and then I've broken it down into curriculum instruction and assessment, and then some of our extracurricular activities at both Seminole and then the middle school, high school complex. So if you want to look at your role, or the page for student counts, you can see that I have two count dates up there. That October 4th count date is our official count date in the state of Michigan for the fall, and then that February is the official count date for the winter. So you can see that King, we had seventy-one in the fall, eighty for our February count date. At Seminole, we are at five hundred sixty-nine, and we're up to five hundred seventy-three. Middle school, we are at one hundred sixty-one, and we're up to one hundred seventy-one. At the high school, we are at two hundred sixty, and we're down to two hundred forty-five. Overall, our total, we had a change, a positive increase of eight students. What I do want to point out in the notes down below is that at Seminole Academy, from that October 4th count date to our February 14th count date, fifty-seven students have entered our building and forty-seven have exited. So while it looks like we've only had a change of four, we've actually had fifty-seven come in, forty-seven leave. So our number, our change is not ten, because we actually had six students that exited and re-entered. So we, it wouldn't count a date where they exited before they entered. So that's why those numbers are a little bit off there. At the middle school, twenty-two new students have entered, but thirteen have exited. At the high school, twenty-four have entered, thirty-five have exited. So again, that number, that's represented up there on the change. It's not representing our no-shows, students who enrolled but never showed up, and then students who exited and then entered. So students who were enrolled with us for that October count date exited, but came back before the February count date.
How many number of students are no-shows?
Of, just between this time, I think it's only two. One at Seminole, and one at somewhere in the secondary complex. I believe it's the high school. Just two.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Of the two hundred and forty-five that are in the high school, can you give me a breakdown in each class, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors?
I don't have that number with me. Would you like to email to you?
Can you get it to me, or email it to me?
Yep, I will do that. Do you want it for?
To the, yes, send it to the whole board.
And what I do, she'll give the information to me, and I'll get it out to you guys.
That'll be fine.
So I'll make sure everyone gets it.
Someone's going to remind me of that, right? Do you only want the high school numbers, or would you like all grades?
That's all right. It's just some information.
In the past, we've had all grades.
Okay.
So yeah, if you can do all grades, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Okay, perfect. So moving on to curriculum, two things I want to talk about are our Atlas document that our teachers are using for curriculum planning, and the I-RIP, which is the new Michigan third grade reading bill. So for the Atlas curriculum update, when Dr. Pearson was here, we started this initiative, and currently we have K to twelve math and K to twelve ELA that are written documents that are housed on Atlas. So our teachers access these electronically to do all their lesson planning based on these curriculum documents. And I've also noted that now we've already gone through our first year with this, first full year, so now we're in the process of making tweaks and updates to those two. Currently, for the science curriculum, the fifth through, I'm sorry, sixth through twelfth grade was written last school year. So they are, they have theirs in place this year, and that they're working on their first year with science. Our K through fifth grade teachers are in the process of finalizing their five-day science training, and then they're going to be working on writing their science documents from now until the beginning of the school year. We're at an impasse with the K to twelve social studies. Because the State Department of Education has not yet adopted new social study standards, so it would not behoove us if we wrote a curriculum alignment guide with standards that are going to be outdated soon. So I believe they're on their eighth draft of the standards. They're seeking public comment for what the standards are right now for social studies. It'll go before the Michigan Board of Education for final approval and adoption. And after that, that's when Mount Clemens will ask teachers to come on board and help write the curriculum alignment tool for that. The next couple slides are devoted to the Individual Reading Improvement Plan, which is referred to as an I-RIP. So all the school districts in the state of Michigan are required that K to third grade students have critical elements of a multi-tiered system of support known as MTSS. It used to be referred to as RTI, but we've adopted new language, so it's the MTSS. And there are four elements that we need to have. Ms. Pinkett, can you go back one slide for me, please? Thank you. Okay, so this is just a little bit of information about the reading law. It was signed October 10th, 2016 by Governor Rick Snyder. The goal is to ensure that the students are proficient on their third grade ELA assessment, and ELA stands for English Language Arts. So that's the hope, is that they demonstrate proficiency on that assessment. And the third grade assessment they're speaking of currently, it's the M-step. There are talks that they're going to change that assessment. When that will happen, we don't know. So currently, they would have to show proficiency on the third grade M-step. We are required to implement many of the MTSS elements, which I was just briefly talking about. And what the bill says is that if the student is not showing proficiency at third grade, then we would retain those students in third grade. They would be in third grade for an additional school year.
And what are the four elements?
Okay, so on the next slide, if you would like to look there. So we have to provide evidence-based comprehensive core reading instruction that meets the needs of a majority of students in the class. That would be considered our tier one instruction. And with the Atlas document that we have, that's where we get our tier one instruction. So we have whole group reading for all of our students, K-five. We also have guided reading, which is individualized reading on students' reading level. So that would be our core instruction. We have to use assessments to screen, diagnose, and progress monitor students three times of year. The assessments that we use at Seminole are the NWEA and the DRA. Both of those assessments had to be selected from a list of assessments that was deemed appropriate by the State Department. If a student is identified for having a reading delay, then an I-RIP needs to be created for them. It's developed by the classroom teacher, and then the parent, there's a large parent component, that the parents help draft, you know, what they think the student needs at school, and also a read-at-home plan. So it really is a school-parent-student partnership. So this year's first graders, the 2017, '18 first graders are the first group that this will really impact, because the retention part of the... that this will really impact because the retention part of this bill does not go into effect until the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year. So our current second and third graders, they will not be retained. It's not until our first graders this year get into third grade.
Now, I understand, I'm sorry, go ahead. I understand that's legislated, that that's how you have to do it.
Yes.
Do they have any provisions in the legislation that if you're aware that if a student in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty in the third grade is not proficient? If that student did stuff over the summer, over the first semester, they became proficient, would they still have to remain in the third grade or could they be advanced to the fourth grade once they become proficient?
There's a few different things in the bill that discusses, for example, if the student is special ed and maybe they won't show proficiency, they would still be passed on to fourth grade. For students who are second language learners, they also, if they don't show the proficiency, they could still be passed on. For our general ed students, part of that MTSS, that multi-tiered system of support, the first tier is the general instruction, but there's two more tiers. So part of that I-RIP, the teachers need to write what the tier-two instruction will be and what the tier-three instruction will be. So it's really intensive on what the student needs. So some students might need comprehension, some students might need fluency, some students might need vocabulary, so that's what that I-RIP identifies for the students. So then there are a few more provisions from there. If the student shows that they aren't proficient with the ELA portion, but they are proficient with math and science and social studies work, then they can be promoted. There is a piece where the parent can appeal to the superintendent, but the superintendent does have final say on if the student is promoted or not. So there are a couple provisions. And I would imagine as we get closer to the nineteen-twenty school year, there will be quite a few more.
What's the, what's the early data telling us as far as the level where is that we need to have these students hitting reading proficiency? What is the percentage of our, of our students that the early data is telling us that we need to target?
Right now, we have two different assessments and both of our assessments are telling us different information.
Okay.
So if we looked at our kindergarten through third-grade students last year and we looked at, that's probably about three hundred kids, a little over, if we looked at our NWA data and that whole group of students, it would be about fifty-three students would be retained. If we used our DRA data, that would be only seventeen students would be retained. So it really will depend on which data we're looking at and what students' I-RIP plans are. There is another kind of contingency piece that the student can demonstrate on-level proficient work through a portfolio. So I know student, our teachers at Seminole are working very hard to start drafting these or creating these portfolios with students to demonstrate that they are producing grade-level work.
Okay, so you said it's two datas that, it's two systems that you're looking at?
Yes.
Which one, which one is the best one that we need to look at that's going to kind of get us ahead of the game?
They're both, they're both good for different things.
Okay.
So right now, we have some data that will help us link the NWA proficiency that I shared with the curriculum committee. That NWA assessment, it kind of forecasts for us how will be, how proficient students will be on the M-step. It gives us better data for which students will not be proficient than the students that will be proficient. However, the DRA assessment is a one-on-one assessment and the NWA is a computer-based assessment, so I think we gather better data using the DRA.
Okay.
And we don't have studies that really link how, how they'll do on the M-step.
Okay.
So the next piece I want to talk about is instruction and our course offerings that we currently have. At Seminole Academy, we offer our core content classes and this, that literacy block right there goes to that tier-one instruction for the MTSS. So the literacy block consists of whole group instruction, guided reading instruction. And when I say whole group, that's the teacher with their class of twenty, twenty-plus students. The guided reading instruction is the classroom teacher with about six students and then writing instruction. We also offer the math, science, social studies and this year, we are implementing responsive classroom, which is really working on social skills and helping with behavior. For our cultural arts, we do offer each of these courses once a week for fifty-five minutes. So the students get every week physical education, art, music, STEM and technology. And then at the middle school, middle school course offerings, core content classes, English, math, science and social studies for all sixth, seventh and eighth graders. For our students in the CI program, CI stands for cognitively impaired, their course offerings are the applied English, math, science, humanities and life skills. And then all middle school students are able to pick from those elective courses you see on the right-hand side of the screen. So the art, writing, PE, public speaking, astronomy, robotics, computer technology and healthy living.
Now, these elective classes, are these, are they the same as last year or do we add to this year?
This year, I don't, I think we added the public speaking this year. I would have to double-check with Mr. Gibson.
Digital public speaking and community technology?
Yes, yep. And then last year, I know we added, for the first time, was robotics one and two.
How's the public, I mean, public speaking is key. That's, 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 I got to speak in public better than just doing it through public. I mean, is that coming along pretty good?
I believe so, yes. Yep, and they're about to have a debate series here at the middle school and high school. I think they have two dates, so that'll be really great to see the students showing off. Yes, put them on your calendar for sure.
Like the movie Debate? The Debate?
They're, they're, um, the topics they're debating are, one of them, I can't even remember. It's a very lengthy topic and the other one is if Black History Month is obsolete. So that'll be very interesting to hear. I believe that's the middle school topic. The high school topic, I can't remember, it's very lengthy.
But it sounds like we're challenging our kids though.
Yes, yes.
That's key.
And it's great conversation between the two groups.
Okay.
Did you have a question, Ms. Really?
Are those classes offered each semester or are they offered certain ones in the first semester, certain ones in the second semester? I understand you have to have staff, people to teach them, so is that our limitation?
It's based on student popularity too, you know, so need, if let's say only five kids sign up for a class, we obviously won't be able to run that. So I would imagine like the robotics one, for example, or the digital publication one would be a fall and the two would be a spring.
Out of those classes, what are we offering now?
We do offer all of them.
Now, well, but what classes are running now? Are they all running now?
I will double-check for second semester. I believe first semester, we did do all of them, but I'll double-check and see what we have for this semester. But as she said, it depends on when the kids are doing their schedules. They pick and choose what they want to attend, so do we have the right number? So I'll, I'll double-check for that.
And probably the high school too, we're going to see that on the next slide, so.
Question on the middle school elective. Physical education and gym. I'm used to seeing physical education and health. What's physical education and gym?
I think the PE gym, that's more of the learning, the sports, the sportsmanship down at the very bottom. You can see like the healthy cooking and living, that applied biology, chemistry, so that's more of that health piece to it.
Yes, and so that's the book part of it and then the gym is the exercise piece. I guess, I think we used to call it health class.
Yeah, health.
I'm with you.
Or ancient school.
Watch it now, I'm in that group.
So then our high school course offerings. So that, that's okay. I didn't hear what you said if you were asking me a question.
He was just insulting me.
So our high school core offerings, you can see on the left side of the screen, that top group is our maths, our English, our sciences, our histories. And then again, that CI program, the cognitively impaired program, those would be their course offerings. The electives, we have quite a few more at the high school, so it's a little bit smaller print, I apologize for that, but those, again, they're always offered, but it's once again based on student popularity and whether or not we can run the course.
Question for you, if you take physical education and gym, health, one and two out of there, which one of those would, would you say are the top four that kids are electing to take?
I do not know. That's a great question though. I would have to ask Mr.
African-American history, those classes have been very popular. They do the SAT prep.
That's a requirement.
Okay, we're on this side. And then they do their.
You just lost me there. You said that's a requirement, but it's up under electives.
But it's not for, it's not required for every grade, that's why. It's if you take the PSAT, based on your PSAT results, that's when you take your SAT prep class. So it's required based on your results, sorry. But not every grade, it's only our eleventh graders that take that PSAT.
Digital production. Oh, yeah, the media studies. I believe the theater performance, I have to, I'll get a presure list for you, but.
How's Spanish one and two?
Oh yeah, we do have classes, I didn't even see that one. But yeah, we do have students enrolled in those each semester. And I believe she told me she had twenty-five students in there.
Any idea how many students we have in our AP classes?
AP classes.
So the next part.
Further, you said the SAT prep is determined by the PSAT?
Yes, that, that test that we looked at.
Right, so that means if you do well on the PSAT, you go to SAT prep or you do worse? I mean, you do terrible on it, you take, which, which one is out of the way?
Poor, a poor score, you would go to SAT.
If you do terrible on PSAT, you're required to the other class.
Yes, but all the, all the core content classes, they do SAT-like questions as a warm-up for their classes. So even if the kids aren't in the SAT prep class, they still do the SAT-like questions in order to prepare for that.
Don't we have a personal staff that teaches that?
Yes, yes. And that class is usually, I've been down there a few times and those classes are usually for.
So for the, for the general public, so just, you know, it's great that we're doing this because, you know, our community needs to know. So just to piggyback off Doc's question, so the PSAT is the test that they give every eleventh grader?
Anybody can take the PSAT.
And the, so in the fall.
So incoming eleventh grader or how does that work?
In the fall, the eleventh graders take the PSAT, excuse me.
So every eleventh grader take that PSAT?
And then, and then in the spring, I believe it's April tenth and eleventh, I have it on here, tenth or eleventh, the ninth and tenth graders will take it and the eleventh graders will take the SAT.
Okay, and based on that score, the PSAT test, they will have to take the SAT prep?
Yes.
Based on their score?
Based on their score.
So it's kind of re, reinforcing them getting a good score to score well to get in college?
Correct, yes, yep. And to score well on the SAT essentially.
Okay. So whose choice is it to take the class or not? The student or the faculty? Cause it sounds like SAT prep is going to help you out.
Yeah.
So why don't we just have them take it?
So it's voluntold that they have to do it, you know, the students, it's really like the counselor shows them their score and based on that, these are the courses you take. It's very similar to our middle school on how the fifth graders score as they are leaving fifth grade based on what electives they can take and what they're kind of like volunteered to take. So if they need a little bit more math help leaving fifth grade, going to sixth grade, they have to take an additional reading class. Or if they need more help, math help, leaving fifth grade, they would have to take an additional math remediation class in the middle school. So it is incentive to do well on those tests, so you can take more of a fun course instead of an academic-based course, but if you don't score well enough, then you're put into that prep course. So the next piece is about assessments and I just wanted to share the upcoming assessments with you and the windows that we have. So on the left side of this screen, it's our elementary, our assessment windows, then the right-hand side of the screen, that's our secondary. Those first five, five assessments, it's the same tests, just different grade bands. So the NWA, we talked about for being very important for the I-RIP data. We take that three times a year and our, we just finished our winter window and in April through May eleventh, we'll be going into our spring window for that. The M-step's broken up into two large testing blocks. So the April ninth through May fourth, that will be fifth grade, eighth grade and eleventh grade taking that test and that consists of an ELA assessment, a math assessment and a social studies assessment. And then for the M-step with the third and fourth grade and the sixth and seventh grade, their window is from April thirtieth to May twenty-fifth and the, they all take math and ELA and our fourth and seventh graders take a science assessment. The My Access window, that's for our CI students, which again is cognitively impaired. They can, depending on their IQ, they either take the My Access or they take the M-step. So it's a teacher selected based on data they have for individual students on which assessment they take. That window is the longest, it's the beginning of the M-step window to the end of the M-step window and that's for students third through eighth grade and eleventh grade. The WIDA assessment is for our English learners of other languages and that is, the assessment window is going on right now. We have twelve students in our district who take this assessment and Ms. Tomlinson is the one who administers that assessment to them individually. A portion of it is, they have to communicate a speaking assessment and a portion of it is done online. And then if you look on the left side, the only assessment for elementary that's up there for the spring is, that's different, is that DRA. And again, that is really important for our I-RIP data and that window is April twenty-third through May eighteenth. And then over on the right-hand side, you can see that the SAT for eleventh grade, it's on four-ten or four-eleven, the ACT work keys for eleventh grade, same dates, and then the PSAT for our ninth and tenth graders, same dates. And then the secondary students, sixth through twelfth grade have their final exams our last two days of school.
Question for you.
Yes.
Cause I just don't know. To get into college, are they using SAT or ACT or both?
They're now doing SAT.
Cause it used to be depending on which school you went to in the south, they more or less did the SAT and the northern universities and colleges used ACT.
But now everyone's really going to the SAT.
So our admissions should be on SAT then?
Yep, and that's why we have the SAT prep class. Yep. So you, hopefully you see that a bunch of our dates overlap. So those poor babies are testing pretty much from April till June, so.
And they get tested three times a year?
For the NWA and DRA at the elementary level, three times a year, for the NWA at the middle, high school, three times a year. The M-step is only once a year at the end of the year. The secondary exams are at the ends of both semesters and then the SAT or the PSAT is given twice a year depending on grade level, so it's only once for each grade level and then the SAT is once a year.
And when do you get the results of the data from each assessment?
NWA and DRA are immediate. M-step, it depends on the state and how quickly they turn things around.
When Michigan, so what does Michigan do?
So the past couple of years, there has been like a larger question for some of the grade levels where it's taken longer to score them. So this year, they've taken that question out or those kinds of questions and it can all be machine scored, so hopefully it'll be a lot quicker. And that is good because starting next year, we use the M-step data to, as a part of the ratings for teachers. And that is good, because starting next year, we use the M-Step data to, as a part of the ratings for teachers. So we do need quick turnaround on that. Usually, it's not before the, the end of the school year, though, not before June.
And last year, we got the SAT information very, very late, so we had to make some adjustments with that, because we were using that to score teachers, and we didn't get that information, I can't remember how late it was.
Until after school was out.
It was out, okay.
Okay, well, I guess this question's for Mr. President and the superintendent. You know, can we as a board get an update when that data comes in after each assessment, so we know exactly where we at, where we stand, as far as the progress? I mean, our number-one job is to educate kids, and we need to be as formative in that, in this area than anything else.
So as we get the.
And it's a good, and I'm sorry, I'm going to cut it off, but it's a good information for the public, then, you know, parents, you know, this is a, this is a technology informational tool for us, so they can see the progress we're making, you know, we can get more students.
Yeah, I think, I'm able to share a little bit more specific data with the curriculum committee, just for privacy laws. I can't share a lot of student data in a public setting, but.
Oh, I'm not saying individual student, no, I'm just saying the data as a whole.
And I, I have shared a little bit with them, so they're always welcome to forward that on to you.
And when we have the next workshop, that will be part of that workshop. I think we did that the last time, too, right? We went over, I, I think I shared it. I think I shared, yes, I did, when we, at our last workshop. So as we get the data, I will make sure that it is shared during our workshops.
So this next piece I wanted to share with you, Brian Winston, the state superintendent, just sent out a memo probably two weeks ago about the release of this new parent dashboard. So anyone can go onto www.myschooldata.org/parentdashboard. And on that parent dashboard, you can get, I think there's 24 points of data for every school that you can see. So it'll tell you about our proficiency scores with ELA, and math, science, social studies. It'll talk about our attendance rate, so you can go on there. This is part of the ESSO law, the Every Student Succeeds Act, where all states had an opportunity to revise their accountability system. So this is what Michigan came up with for their accountability system. So they worked, the State Department and SEPI, that Michigan Center for Educational Performance and Information, they worked together to create this parent dashboard.
Do we have a link, or do, is this link on our?
Yes.
Our website?
I don't know if it's on.
Like if a parent comes to our website, wants to gather, is there a link on our website that could, that'll take them to this?
You should be able to access it, usually there's a pop-up on most school websites where it has like the mittens on it. You should be able to click that, and it'll take you.
So that's, okay, yeah, that's up under the mittens then?
It should be, yes, yep. Okay, and then the next section is just talking about some of our extracurriculars that we offer here. So the club offerings at Seminole, we have Girls on the Run, which is starting in the next couple of weeks. Calio Kids, which is a partnership with Kensington Church, the Junior Optimist Club, and Spanish Club. Shout-out to Ms. Escalante, who runs that club, thank you so much. Over on the middle and high school, we have the Detroit Swims, Dance Club, Gamers Club, Teens Talking Truth, Chess Club, Choir, Golf, Travel Club. Shout-out to Mr. Bruley, who runs the Travel Club, thank you, Key Club, and the 4H Tech Wizards.
And Ms. Walker will be running the Key, because she's going to be a huge part of that, so.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Walker, shout-out to you.
What is a 4H Tech Wizard? Is that like kids who love technology, or?
It's a partner, it's a partnership through 4H, so they kind of run, run that.
I mean, is it dealing with technology, or?
You know, the old 4H club.
Yeah, yeah, I remember the 4H one when I grew up, yeah. Okay.
One question, what is Detroit's Swims?
That is a good question. I will have to ask.
I know who.
I will have to ask Mr. Gibson.
Okay, we've partnered with Y MCA, and they've extended their pools with the, it's a number of kids that can go over and learn how to swim.
Got you, okay. I was just curious, why is the Detroit Swim?
All Ys are now one?
Okay.
So the Mount Clemens Y is part of the Detroit system?
Got you.
They all organize together, and they had a swim club, and so our kids go to Mount Clemens, but.
Got it, it's still just called Detroit, okay.
Yeah, it's just.
And then our field trip offerings at Seminole, we do one field trip per grade level. Our CI program, our, all four of our classes, our CI classes go to the Science Center. Over at the middle school and high school, these are offered, but not all students attend all of them. Most of the university tours are specifically for the 11th and 12th graders. And then all of the field trips for the middle school, high school are independently funded, either through grants, through the university themselves, or like the DIA, they fund the trip completely. So the only one that the students have to pay for, for the middle school and high school, is that Cedar Point Math and Science Day. For the Seminole field trips, we try to defer most of the costs, so students have to pay between $3 and $9 for their trip. Our most expensive trip is that Mackinac Island trip, that's an overnight trip for 4th graders. And it's just depends on what size room the kids want, that it's around $200. Little more, little less, depending on the size of the room. But the 4th graders have been fundraising all year for this trip. We are still looking for male chaperones, if any of our wonderful board members would like to be those male chaperones for us. We would appreciate you volunteering. I know, two fun-filled days with our 4th graders at Mackinac Island. So on the horizon, we are looking to start a Young Fives program at Seminole Academy. So what a Young Fives program would be, a few years ago, the state of Michigan changed the law that the enrollment date would change from September 1st to December 1st for kindergartners, but they never took the part out of the law with the old start date. So currently, our kindergartners can start school with a waiver, if they have birthdays in September, October, and November. What we'd like to propose is that those young fives, the four-year-olds not turning five until September, October, November, that they would be a part of our Young Fives program. And our kindergarten classrooms would be only five or six-year-olds, that they would have to be five-year-old, five-years-old by September 1st. So our Young Fives program will promote like a two-year kindergarten program, essentially. They would do their Young Fives for a whole entire school year, and at the end of their Young Fives year, they would go to kindergarten, and then our kindergartners would go from kindergarten to first grade. So we're working on developing a committee to hopefully get this in place for a false start. We are happy to have parents, board members, I currently have three teachers and myself on the committee. So if you are interested in developing this and making it work for Seminole Academy, we'd love to have input.
And it's fully funded by the state?
Yes, yeah. That is the conclusion of what I have for you this evening.
We've had two, I think, really good curriculum meetings, and I appreciate all the information. And it's helped me learn a lot. I think one of the things we brought up at the meeting that I didn't expect for this evening was we're going to get participation levels on this, on this page for the next one. Not, not tonight, but like how many kids are going on what trips and stuff like that.
Okay, you want that added?
Yeah.
For next time, okay, or maybe our workshop, yeah.
But I think more importantly, and it is, we, what I've learned is if we look at this enrollment change, that is a huge impact on us. If you look at the high school, for example, and you see 24 kids have entered, 35 have exited, so that's nine, 59 kids. So we have 260. So there's 60 kids that are in flux. Add that to what the superintendent has told me, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to. How many kids come late most days?
Most days over here, probably about 75.
So you have 60 kids that are coming in and out. Then you have 75 kids that are coming late, and sometimes substantially. And then you have kids that are leaving early. So we can do the responsibility that the teachers have, but the teachers don't have a consistent group of people to teach to. And then you add on to that weekends, a Monday or a Friday. And even if a teacher is up to speed, and I say even, it's almost impossible. I, I think that we have to develop some data that gets at this other part, that gets at, and I don't know if you even have it, because I've, I mean, I've been learning over the last two months of these meetings. They've been very helpful, as I said, but I think we really need to see lateness, attendance, and other sorts of things, because I think we really have to come to terms with who our population is, and how are we going to get them in the building if we're going to make a dent in the scores? Because you're not going to be able to make a dent in the scores unless they're here. So you have an initial problem that even through all these other mechanisms is not resolvable. I think the other figure we heard, correct me if I'm wrong, but that at the grades called Seminole, there's probably 50 kids a day that is leaving early.
Yes, correct.
So that's out of a population of that, but you have like almost 50 kids leaving early, not necessar, so they're missing something all the time. So we have to, I mean, we're going to have to figure that out before you can really improve on these other things in a lot of respects. So even, you know, you, you can do all these other things to a T, and this isn't going to work. So I think it's, we have to, and, and, so the answer isn't better-trained teachers, it isn't better classroom, you know, it's something else that we as a district have to look at, that other places maybe don't have as much of an issue with, to do. And it's sort of something I think that clearly, from my years on the board, I wasn't as fully aware of as that, now I am, and I really thank you guys on coming in, in the superintendent for making us more aware of that. So it, it's, it's a bigger hill to climb. So I, I don't know if it's possible, do you keep attendance scores by class, or how is attendance kept?
Each hour, well, in the elementary is in the morning, and then again in the afternoon. And in the middle, secondary level is every class.
So every class?
So every hour.
So is it possible to get attendance, a look, say, at the high school? Do you have those autistical kinds of things that we could sort of see and have for the next meeting that we could? Because we, we, we need to figure out, how do we get the kids here? How do we, you know, keep them here in order to have them? If we are improving teaching, which I think we are, I think these trainings have been better.
I think so, yes.
You found that to improve some scores and things?
Yes, yes.
So that's part of it, but our other part of it is, you got to come. And that's, that's a huge thing that we got to, I think we have to figure out as a board, how are we going to work that? I don't know the answer, but I think it's a question we got to come.
Particularly, you know, if you're talking to elementary school, that's a definitely, and even probably through the high school, that's a parental thing. If you, an elementary school kid is leaving early, they're not just leaving on their own, you know, they've got a parent that's pulling them out. So, I mean, that's outside the realm, we can't legislate, you got to keep your kid in here until the end of the day, every day. I mean, we could do that, but.
Well, I, I, yeah, I don't think it's legislating, I, I think it's not rulemaking, but it's, but we have to figure out what the stress is on, in the elementary, what the stress is on the family, and I think we have to schedule something that works. And I think at the high school, it's, you know, if you've got 75 kids not coming to school at the beginning of school, why are we even beginning school? I think we have to look at start times. I mean, you, you've got, you know, a third of your kids not showing up till later. Well, why are we starting so early if they're not showing up now, maybe they won't show up at any time?
Right, and that's what.
That could be, but I think the first thing is to look at that issue and say, well, if it's a little bit later, can we make this work? I, I, plus other things, but I think we should dig into it.
Yeah, I, when I worked for security before I got on the board and I was with the district, I was one of those persons that sat at that front door, and I took attendance of every student, stu, every single student that came in the building late. And I made a data sheet, and I put it all on the data sheet, and I used to give it to, to Lieutenant Taylor. Now, what happened to it after that, I couldn't tell you, but it was bad then, it sound like it's bad now. Couple of things, as a district, I think we need to really look at before and after-school programs. Are we going to get 100%? No, we're not. I mean, we think we're going to do 100%, we're setting ourselves up for failure. But if we can get ourselves to a certain percentage based on what we can offer as a district, one, before and after-school programs. So you've got a lot of parents who are like, listen, I, they working two jobs. And a lot of parents are like, you know what? I know, I know you got to be at school at 8 o'clock, but I just got off, off of work at 6:00. I'm going to get a couple hours of sleep, and then I'll get you there by 10:00. And that's real, okay? And you've got some parents saying like, listen, I, I can't, you know, I have nowhere, your auntie can't come, come get you, your uncle can't come get you, I got to come get you, because I got to come get you and take you out of school early, because I got to get to work.
Yes.
That's real.
Yes.
I look in, and I see it every day at my job. I got people who work for me, I can't schedule them a certain time, because they got to leave and pick their kids up.
Or a 10-year-old got to stay there and take care of his baby sister or baby brother.
Get what I'm saying? So, you know, we as a district, we got to look at before and after-school programs at every school level. Not just at the elementary, but at every school level. You know, another thing we need to look at is that, we really need to look at, you know, what's going on, you know? I, from my recollection, I thought DHS came in to help us with this. That was one of the mechanisms that they came in and helped us with, as far as attendance. And by your reaction, it, it must not be working, it ain't working.
Well, remember at the board meeting in May, I believe it was, they came and presented, and you guys asked them point-blank, and they told you, oh, we don't do that. Everything you ask, oh, no, that's not us. So, just to be honest.
So, yeah, I think we need to, we need to step outside the box, you know? We need to look at something that we need to do for our kids, because this is about kids, we're in the business of kids. And of course, with the social issues, with the poverty issue, you know, there's a lot of mechanisms in there that we have to deal with, that our, that parents are dealing with. Like I said, there's parents out there working two, three jobs, four jobs. And on their priority list, I got to make sure these lights and this gas stay on, okay? And unfortunately, those are choices that they have to make, but, you know, you got to do what you got to do. But we as a district, we got to, I think it's what it is we do. We got to look at, you know, may we need, I, I don't know, may we do need to look at start times at what complex? Who, what grade level starts when, you know what I'm saying? And that just, that's something we need to look at, a district, and find out, you know, what's the best solution? Is, is, is a one-all, fix-all? No. But we got to look at, you know, what's best, what's best for the majority, I guess is what I'm saying.
And what we have been trying to do, especially at the secondary level, there's some students that we know are chronically late, because, as you said, mom just got off. that we know are chronically late because, as you said, mom just got off, and they, and the older student can't leave the house until mom gets home, so to make sure that the little ones get to school and at Seminole, but they're late here. So we've been working with those students to see if we can get, give them non-core classes for the first hour or so to accommodate, because as you said, that is their real world. And that's mom's job, or that's dad's job, so that's how we've been helping to accommodate those students that we can. And then there are some, like I said, we wouldn't care if we didn't start until noon, they'll still be two hours late, you know what I mean? So we, the ones that we can address and help, we certainly have. Have we helped all? Not yet, but we're hoping that we can get to that point.
But even with, even with the ones that, like you guys say, don't care what time we start, then there's other avenues that we need to explore, you know, as a district to, you know, sometimes people need a little help in hand.
And one more thing, Terry McCord is, we found, she found a grant offering that we are going to apply for, and it will help address things just like that. And the biggest thing is a summer program, but it also lends to some afternoon, after school programs. So we're just now getting that paperwork on what the requirements are, and you can apply for up to, I think it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So she, we just found that on, I believe it was Monday, and you have to let the folks know that you're interested before they send you any paperwork, so...
But is that majority summer, or is that majority before and after school?
No, it goes, it goes hand in hand. It lends to after-school programs and some before-school. So we don't know all the detail because they haven't sent us the information, but just scanning over it, it says, yes, it is a summer program, but you can implement some afternoon, after-school and before-school. So until we actually get the paperwork, I can't give you any more details, but it sounded exciting, it's something that this district does need and could definitely use, so whatever avenue that we can, we're exploring, so. So I just wanted to know that, yes, we know it's an issue that we have in this district, and we are trying and looking for ways to help our students and families.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, additional information item, January twenty-eighteen financial report. Are there any additional questions with the financial report? Seeing or hearing none. Item nine, open purchase order listing. Any additional questions or information needed, required? Seeing or hearing none, moving, contract listings. I think we have a request for proposal out, does that indicate?
Yes. What we have, one, that one, let's see, we did send the one out for audit, our, this is the last year we could do the audit, so we did send that out, and that was on the fifteenth, I believe, that we submitted that one. We also will be doing a healthcare one. I was going to send that one out, but then I realized that that is a January one start, so we don't technically have to submit that one until, to the fall, September. So that, that's why you don't see, we're not doing that one right now. And transportation, we just had a couple more things to tweak, so that will be out before the end of the week for your bus services for our students.
Mr. Bruhl?
Yeah, I, we talked about these at the business finance meeting, and I found everything in order, but I'm wondering, just for process-wise, shouldn't those come to the board to be approved before we send them out? I mean, I think, I think any request for proposal should be approved by the board. I mean, I, before we would send it out.
My, my recall, and somebody, we generally reacted after, you know, when they brought the RFPs were put out, then when the, when the bids came back, they'd give us the tabulation of the bid compilations, and then the recommendation of the bid, because, and, you know, I don't have any problem either way, but we, the board could get an RFP and start wordsmithing it, and not really understand the full scope of what the RFP should be. It could be, again, it's up to the will of the board, it can be put in as an information piece, but generally, you vote on RFPs after they've been put out in the public and they've come back with the bids.
Well, I find that kind of backwards. The RFP is a request for proposal. I'm not worried about wordsmithing one or two words here or there, but if there's things in those proposals that you put out for bid that the board is unaware, unaware of, and I would say, you know, we talked about it all, it's at the business committee, so I'm fully aware of what was going on and comfortable with it, but I think the board is the one requesting the proposal. And we're committing ourselves, once that's out in the public, to certain sets of things. And it doesn't make sense that you would put it out without having the board approve it, then it goes out, then you get the bids back, we know which bid we do or don't want. But I thought in the past, we had them come to us first, I, at least that's what I sort of remembered, and I was thinking these were gonna come again. Maybe just because I was on the business committee, I saw them, and they never came to the board, that's a possibility. But I know, as a, as a board member, I would want to see things that go out the name of the school, because if the bid doesn't make sense, why are we putting it out, and then we, it comes back, and you have no chance to, to make any comment on it.
And I'm not, again, my recall is that we never did that, and if you want to change it, but we entrust the staff that works for us to do, because I'm not gonna, I'm not somebody who's gonna be going measuring to see how many linear feet of concrete we need to put into the RFP. That's the responsibility of the staff.
I'm not going to measure anything either, but I am gonna look at the sections, I am gonna look at the big titling, I am gonna look at the concepts that are there. And I think the board has, do share a responsibility, be aware of those things.
Any additional questions on item ten?
So let me just, I just need clarification for myself. Mr. Bruhl, so what you're saying is that we need to view the RFP before it goes out as a board? To view it, to view the language?
Yeah, we're gonna put out a proposal for bus transportation.
Superintendent brings it to us to view the language, is what you're saying?
Yeah, we're gonna put out a proposal for bus transportation. So the proposal's written for bus transportation, does it include or not include monitors on the bus? That's not wordsmithing, that's policy.
And they have to.
Should, should, but what if it doesn't say that? I'm, you know, I've not found, and this is no comment on superintendent or password, but, but everybody's human. I mean, I think a couple more pairs of eyes looking at things is not, it's just a process, you look at it, it's helpful. I mean, I wish the contract on that Jermaine Center would have been looked at by the whole board, and we wouldn't be in a ninety-nine-year lease that is so stupid, you can't believe it.
Point taken. Point taken. So can I just connect, RFP go to the business committee to be reviewed?
Yes, and I do, mhm.
And then the business committee brings it back to the full board?
So the audit one, they did get...
Yeah, we saw them all.
Yeah, but after you guys said, you were saying before it's actually published?
The whole board should see, in case the business committee misses something.
So it's kind of like the standard procedure, that it goes to the business committee, looks at it, and the business committee brings it to the full board?
Right.
Before it goes out?
Right.
I don't have a problem with that.
Not a problem.
Any other questions, discussion on this agenda item? Moving the agenda, item eleven, Macomb County Outstanding Teacher of the Year. Ms. Davis?
Yes, we do have a candidate from the middle school and the high school and King that were submitted. We did get one from Seminole, but it was after the deadline, so we didn't have an opportunity to submit that one. But the other ones were submitted, and now it's, this has been sent to the MISD. So we're excited about the teachers that were submitted, so once all of that is approved and they voted, then we'll bring that to the board, and in recognition of those teachers.
And they were selected by their peers?
Yes, it's selection...
And not by the administration or...
Absolutely, yes.
Or committee of the board, or they're selected by a peer, committee of their peers?
Yes, and that's always been the case, that it's selected by the peers.
Okay, any questions? Superintendent's comments?
Yes. First, we want to welcome all of our students back from winter break. It was a short one, but I know the parents were excited about them returning, because we did have a few to call us on Monday and was wondering where the bus was, so I guess they were home a little bit too long from, but we were very glad to welcome them back this morning. We also have an advertisement in CNG, just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention for the kindergarten roundup, and you guys should have a copy of it. It's in the middle of the, in the fold, I believe. And it's the kindergarten roundup, and it will be over at Seminole on Thursday, March the first, at six P.M. So we're excited about kindergarten roundup, so we want all of our community parents to be aware of that. And one huge, and we're so proud of one of our eighth graders, you guys have a copy of the Free Press news article, is Javon Hannah, is listed as one of the top basketball athletes in the country, I believe right now he's ranked number two in the state, and he is in one of the top twenty of the country as an eighth grader. Michigan State and University of Michigan have already been, you know, they've come, they've been interested in him and invite him down to their gyms and meet with the coaches. And so that's been exciting for him, but I just want to make sure that we recognize Javon Hannah, he did interview, and if you click on the website and see that interview, he speaks very, speaks articulately, and he represents the district very well, and he lets everyone knows that he is committed to this district, that he enjoys being here, and he is one of our honor students, and we're just, I just want to make sure he knows that we are so proud of him and what he's accomplishing thus far in his educational experience here in Mount Clemens. So that was exciting to see him featured in the Free Press. Our special education department here at the high school is taking a few kids on a trip to Kalamazoo tomorrow, so we're excited for them, and wishing them safe travels to and fro. And, let's see, our travel club, and I'm sure Mr. Bruhl will update you on that, but I just want to let everyone know that we do have a number of students that have been participating in that, and they really enjoy that club. It's a great experience for them to do things that they have not, or wouldn't normally get an opportunity to do. And so, you know, Mr. Bruhl will talk about that. And on the other hand, we did have our track interviews today, so we're excited about being able to name someone soon, so the, talk to the candidate, and we're excited at the possibilities of what could happen with our track club, so more to come on that. And Chris Martin?
Thank you. Committee reports, business committee. Ms. Walker?
We met on February twelfth, and Mr. Bruhl and Ms. Escalante, and Ms. Davis and myself were there, and we went over the bills for payment, contracts, everything seemed to be in order. Anything else that I have forgotten, or are we...
Oh, it's the business we did tonight?
Yep. That's my report.
All right, any questions on the chair? Thank you. Mr. Moore, policy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a schedule conflict, it was just one of the policies, and I pulled that tonight that needs further review, and we'll bring that to the next, for second reading. One question that I do have, and this is for the superintendent, and, you know, as, as the policy, I think I need to just, one, bring it up, then for general information for our public, you know, in light of what just happened in Florida. And I think every board, school board in the United States of America is having this conversation right now. Can you tell us, the board and also the general public, what steps or what provisions do we have in place for a active shooting situation at any of our schools in this district?
Yes. Thank you, I did forget that piece on my superintendent comments. We are working very closely with the MISD, which is the McComb Intermediate School District, county level of school districts, and Sheriff Wickersham's office. We had a conference call today to discuss that very thing, because I don't know if you guys saw the news last night, we did have Mike Devault from the ISD, superintendent of the ISD, and also Dr. Chris, she's gonna shoot me, from the Utica Schools, and they did, Christina John, thank you, and forgive me, Chris, but they did speak with the public, with the news reporters yesterday, and also met with, with Mark Hackle at the county, and we're coordinating with the ISD to see if, everything is still in the stages, planning stages, but we are working very closely with them, and we will be having a meeting on the twenty-eighth, I believe. And we believe that our schools are safe, and we will be working a little bit more closely with the Sheriff's Department, so that they will have a better picture of what's going on if we do get in that situation. And last week, I believe it was, during the half-day, PD over here at the high school, Mr. Gibson had a really good intense conversation with staff. That wasn't even on the PD schedule, but one of the teachers had asked a question, and they had a really good intense conversation that was very helpful to the staff, and so we're gonna do that on the next PD day, so that all the staff in the district have an opportunity to, so we can share with them what's going on and how we would do that, and also doing a couple drills of that, because we have drills for everything else, intruders, and we have them for fires and those kinds of things, but we have not had one for an active shooter.
Okay, so we are gonna have a drill for an active shooting situation?
Yes.
Which I think needs to be examined.
Yes, and we are working very closely with our Director of Safety, Mr. Bob Taylor, so as a matter of fact, he and Rob, and I believe, are supposed to be going to, it's either the sheriff's office tomorrow, or the ISD, that they have a meeting there for them as well. So we're not only working as a district, but as a county, to make sure that, you know, all of our kids are safe throughout the county.
And then for the, for our parents in the district, does that planning stage and also execution stage stands out to them as far as what they need to do? You know, I've followed it closely, I think I've been glued to the TV, you know, and I probably use a whole box of Kleenex.
Yes.
But, you know, parents need to know what they need to do in those type of situations, not only our staff, not only us, not only the board, across, but everybody across the board.
board needs to be implemented into this. I mean, this happened at a school, that this happened at a school in a city that was rated most safe in the country. So, you know, it'd happen anywhere, you know what I'm saying? Violence has no boundaries.
Yes.
But, you know, going forward, I think we need to put that in place ASAP, so that, you know, I mean, you really don't need a plan until you need a plan.
That's true.
And that's how, you know, it's kind of how I look at it, and I'm pretty sure that's kind of everybody else looks at it, but we definitely want to have something in place just in case we do need a plan.
Absolutely, and hopefully we never do.
Thank you for that, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any questions of the chair? Community Coalition, Mr. Lennonberry?
Good evening, Board. We have been working on our next two events, which are going to be Real Talk Two, which is coming up in April, and our Career Fair, which is going to be happening in May. So those are the big things that we have been pushing forward on. I'll give you more information as we get closer to those dates. Mr. Brewley, you had asked for information to be sent to the board from the first Real Talk, and Mr. Bunton is getting that together, and he says we'll get that to you guys shortly. I'm sorry we haven't gotten to that sooner, but they are working on getting that information to you, so that did not go on deaf ears, by the way. You should have a nice little gold envelope in front of you from the City of Mount Clemens. We are celebrating our bicentennial anniversary on Sunday, March 11th, so you're invited to the Emerald Theater to enjoy a program in honor of our city's 200th anniversary. So we hope you will make time to be a part of that. It's hosted by a guy you might know, he's got a really good voice, he's tall, wiggly handsome.
Stop talking about him.
I know.
It's true, the voice of the bathers, man.
So then again, then it'll be at the Emerald Theater, and slightly off topic, I did want you to know about the kindergarten roundup. I also do the marquee sign on Cass Avenue, and I put that on there as well, so it's being advertised on the Cass sign over on, on the city side. So just want to let you know that back out down. Any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Lennonberry?
Good to see you, man.
Anything to eat at this event?
There will be desserts, and there will be, the bar will be available. So there will be desserts, and cupcakes and cake, things like that. There'll be a birthday cake for the city, of course. I don't know if it's going to have 200 candles, I know they're 200, but something like that along those lines. But it should be a very nice program, we hope you guys will make some time and come out and enjoy that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Legislative, the Legislative Committee did meet at the ISD on the 13th, but I was in the gym announcing the basketball game, so I was MIA. And personnel?
Yes.
The chair?
We have met February 12th, and a wonderful thing about tonight is Ms. Jensen presented a whole topic that we went over. So there's nothing else to talk about unless you want to put some input. Mr. Brewley, give her anything to say, anything you want to add to it? Ms. Walker?
No, I think she, yeah, she covered everything here tonight very nicely.
I mean, everything she said, everything went over, so there's nothing else to add.
Yep.
A great meeting.
Thank you, sir. Athletic?
Athletic, I have not had a meeting this week, this month, but there was nothing pertinent on the, on the schedule except for the hiring of the track coach, and I didn't feel like we needed to have our input into that, but the superintendent and her staff handled it. So we did not have a meeting for that, and if anything else come on the radar, we'll definitely put a meeting together for it.
Any questions?
Yeah, Dave, I just have, since I was just appointed to the Athletic Committee, do we normally do, are we normally brought into the interviewing process when they hire someone? Is it normally?
A board member?
Or a board member, or a committee function?
It is, it's generally not. We try to keep the board out of the hiring process when it comes to coaches, teachers, and whatever.
Right.
We want input to understand what's going on, but like, this committee, as I was explaining, is an ad hoc committee, so it's not like we're going to have a general meeting every month.
Okay.
It's when something pertinent comes up that we put our foot into it, then we have a meeting.
But under normal circumstances, we would not be part of a hiring process either, would we?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Got a question for you, Doc. I know we talked about all that equipment that was up underneath the bleachers. Where are we at, I mean, we're going to, you know, track season is coming up.
Throw it at me, I'm going to, I'm going to watch, watch if you divert that question.
That was good.
It's still under the bleachers?
It's still under the bleachers?
Yes, and we'll probably have to assess the damage when the weather.
That stuff is just gone. I tell you, the damage is now, it's gone.
Yeah, it's been damaged for years, and we did contact someone, because that stuff is very, very heavy, it won't dry out, so it's extremely heavy, so we contacted someone to come and get it, and they said they'll be out hopefully in the spring to come and get it, because the weather is not conducive for them to come and move that stuff right now. But they did come out and look at it, and it's been soaked and, like I said, under there for I don't know how many years.
So what's the plans for, if we bring in on a new track coach, and we don't have a track season, I assume, what's the plans for training our high jump and all, all our student athletes who's going to use that particular equipment, which we don't have, and we ain't got no money to buy more? So what's the plans going forward as far as where they're going to train at, or what they're going to work on?
Well, right now, whenever the coach does start, he will assess what the kids want to do, so right now, the thing is that they're thinking that they're just going to run track, not any high jumps or anything, but if they, eventually if that's what they want to do, we will figure out a way that, because I believe most of the stuff under there, those pads and things, and that was for high jumps and all of that, so that's not part of the track club that we're looking at. So that's equipment that, like I said.
So the track club is not, well, I guess you can probably refer to Mr. Rickman as the track, track expert. Is that part of?
My, what's, my, my guess, if I was the coach, I would have to find some alternative means to try, if I had people that were interested in high jump?
Right.
I would have to find some alternative means, I, you know, I know there's, when, I don't even know if they're still around here, but when I coached indoors, there were smaller mats that you could pull out for high jump practice. I would look into some alternative methodologies, because we've got rid of the pole vault years and years ago, because of the liability on that. But we've always had the high jump equipment. Maybe some of it can't be solved, which I don't know, because we did pull it out last year, was usable last year, but it was not taken care of in a proper manner. But the coach should have some other methodologies of getting around that, even if it's going to another school, sending the kids after practice, hey, hey, Coach Monk, can I send my kids over there to work on the high jump?
Right.
You know, or something like that.
Right. But, any other questions, Mr. Monk?
No, I just think, I'll make a comment, I think going forward, coaches need to be held responsible, maybe not get paid for not putting up this equipment, so it stops costing us money. Amen. That's it.
Point, well, take it.
I'm pretty sure that's going to be in his job title anyway, for description or whatever it may be. No superintendents on that.
Any other questions, discussion? Thank you. Education Foundation Commitment, they have not had a meeting yet. I put in a call to the chair, they said before they have a meeting, they'll let me know in advance. So I'm pretty sure we should be having a meeting within the next month or so to start talking about the application for the, for the scholarship for seniors this year and that whole rollout. So I'm pretty sure we'll be having a meeting within the next, six weeks or so. Okay, um, board comments. Start with Mr. Brewley.
Well, I, I really do appreciate the curriculum committee and the efforts there. I think we're getting a much better hold on where we're at. I think that there are improvements that have been made in teacher training and helping the teachers better understand what we need to do, and we've seen those improvements. I think that's, I think that's the biggest piece of it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Ms. Escalante?
Well, I have one thing I have to say I disagree with Teresa about tonight. She said that the break was too short for the kids for midwinter break. It was way too long in my house. So I just had to put that out there. No, I actually enjoyed having them home, it was, it was nice. We have three, four-year board terms coming up. These are elected positions, so if you're interested, you would need to file no later than 4:00 PM on the 24th of July of this year at the County Election Department in downtown Mount Clemens. That's located at 32 Market Street. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Voorhees?
Actually, believe it or not, once a bather, always a bather.
That's it. We keep it, I'm going to, I've learned from Dr. McFadden, keep it short and sweet.
I don't say that me, though.
That's your mark.
Hey, Mr. President, again, I want to thank our students for our signs. I love these better than these nameplates, these are so boring. But I love my sign, I'm pretty sure all the board members do love theirs, so thank you again to our wonderful students over at Seminole for our signs, and I'm going to figure out all the students that's on mine, and I'll get over there and visit you guys. I want to thank the three young men for participating in the FBI program, you know, I think when we can expose our young, especially our young black males, but our young males in general, to, you know, law enforcement, and having our young people understand law enforcement's job, their responsibilities, and also their job and responsibilities as young people, and how they could and how they should conduct themselves. I think that's a, that's a great program, and I hope we have more participation with that. You know, again, you know, I just want to reiterate that, you know, the safety of your kids is our first priority, and we at this, this board is, takes that not lightly. You know, with the discussion you seen tonight, you know, we are definitely going to make sure that we have everything in place, so that whatever emergency situation happens, we can take care of your kids as best as we can, and then they can get home safe to you. And with those comments, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Ms. Walker?
Like Mr. Monk, I want to congratulate, and I'll make sure I got these names right, Aaron Davis, Darren Downing, and Levi Petty.
Yep.
They, so proud of them. And Javon Hannah, there are no words. My daughter is in eighth grade with him, and when I came home, I said, you're not going to believe this, she knew way ahead of me. She's like, oh my gosh, can you believe, so she was so excited for him, and he is a great kid, great family, and again, I agree with Mr. Monk. Your kids are a top priority, and we will do whatever we can to keep them safe. There are just no words for what happened, but we are here to protect your kids, not just to educate them. So with that, those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Before I comment, I'd like to request that you pull out your calendars. We need to schedule a workshop where we develop goals to evaluate the superintendent. By, we have to, today, this evening, we're going to be trained on the new laws on evaluation of the superintendent, so the next thing would be is, after we do that, would be we need to establish a date where we have a retreat where we can actually establish collectively with the superintendent some goals. So I'll just throw out, you know, not suggesting a date, just saying that the 27th of February, the 2nd of March, 14th, 12th and 14th of March are bad dates for me.
Mr. Brewley, you got any blackout dates?
Yeah, but why don't you go with, why don't we get some positive dates? March 13 through 21st, I can't do.
How about March the 3rd? It's a Saturday.
3rd?
I'm just throwing it out there.
I can't do that one.
Okay, so. Do it out, I'll pull it back.
Should I just pass my calendar down to you? You could just.
Was there a Monday night that works, is the next?
No Mondays are good for me.
Okay, no Mondays, what about Tuesday?
Tuesdays is possible, possible, doable.
The next, next Tuesday is the 27th, can't do it, for me.
What is the following Tuesday?
It would be the 6th of March.
When do you leave the 13th?
6, 6 is fine.
I have no conflict, nothing scheduled for the 6th on my calendar.
No, I, I can't do Tuesdays, because that's, I close at work every Tuesday.
Okay, so Mondays and Tuesdays are off the table.
What about Wednesday?
How about Wednesday the 7th?
That's good with me.
Yep, good for me.
Wednesday the 7th?
That's what we're doing. Looking around right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. You know, I, we kind of like the weekends, you know, I mean, the last one ran, what, probably five hours?
Four and a half, five hours, that's what I'm looking at.
So I don't know whether you want to do that at, starting at 6 o'clock at night, and then you're at 10, you know, I mean, not that it's past my bedtime, you know, but, but, you know, it depends on, we covered an awful lot of material, I think, at that meeting, and, and I, you know, we probably have to do that again, obviously.
Well, I don't believe, you know, for this type of retreat, we would go into as depth as we did.
Okay.
You know.
Okay, so we.
We need to get some of that information as we move forward, but not in detail, you know, more summarized.
That we did, that we did originally, okay.
That's just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, so then Wednesday, March the 7th, is what we're looking at?
That's the date that's been thrown out, yes, sir.
With you, Doc?
Well, I'll think like you about the weekend thing. How about the March, March 10th, what's going on that day? Anybody cannot make the 10th, a Saturday. Mr. Monk, is Saturday okay with you?
Saturday, 10th is, yep, I'm good.
I'm good.
Mr. Brewley, is it all right?
Yeah, I prefer the week.
I mean, just, just say Saturday's not good, then.
Well, it's just, I'll do it if I have to, but I, I prefer to keep it during the week and have the weekend.
I was, I agree with you for March at least. March, yeah.
So.
I mean, we're talking about the superintendent's evaluation, right?
No, we'll be talking about, we'll be establishing goals.
The rest of the year.
For the rest of the year, yeah.
I still think, even if, even if we had to do two Wednesdays, I'd rather do that.
So we got the 7th, and we've got the 10th, the dates that have been thrown out.
I'm good with either one, so, I mean, you got to figure, I mean, if it's just setting superintendent goals, it's not going to be, you're talking about what, maybe a two-hour meeting?
Possibly, you know, could go longer.
Right.
Ms. Walker?
I like the 7th, I like Wednesday the 7th.
Ms. Escalante?
I'm good with either one.
Somebody put a motion on the floor, and then we'll see what happens.
I move that we, we meet on the 7th of March to set the superintendent evaluation goals.
The board superintendent goals.
Board superintendent goals, board goals for the superintendent.
Can we get a time and a place?
6 o'clock?
6 ain't going to work.
You can start at 6.
6 ain't going to work.
Doc, I'm going to be here at 6.
7 o'clock.
You know what, once you do, once you do 6:30, I'll be at 6:35, but do 6:30, because I don't want to wait, have y'all waiting around for me to be here.
6, then we meet at 6:30.
It's been moved by Mr. Monk to establish March 7th, 6:30 PM, for the workshop, for the board, the superintendent goals. Is there support?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor?
We will try to meet at the ISD again.
That, that was going to be my next thing, you know.
I'll keep my mouth shut.
Ms. President, I'll amend that motion to meet at the ISD.
Okay, move by Mr. Monk as a... Move by Mr. Monk as to March 7th, 6:30 PM at the ISD for the Board Superintendent Workshop for Establishing Goals. Are you okay with that, Ms. Walker, as the second of the motion has been second?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing is seen, none. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brule?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, thank you. The motion carries. My comment is, March is Reading Month. And I'm pretty sure, as in the past, the board members will get an invitation from Seminole to solicit your time to come over and put a Dr. Seuss hat on and read to the kids as they've done in the past. I thought you was giving a pass that our invitations are right now. I would like to say congratulations to the lady bathers in basketball and in volleyball, to the battling bathers for basketball, to, to the middle school Bulldogs, boys and girls, winter sports. Congratulations on your seasons. The boys' season is over, but I think the girls might have had a game today or tomorrow at the eighth-grade level, so their season is winding down. For, for those varsity teams, congratulations on, as your season wind down. And good luck in the tournaments. When the tournaments start in March, as part of March Madness, all of our, all of our varsity teams are invited to participate in district tournament. You win, you lose, and you go home. Last year, for some reason, our volleyball team did not go to the districts. And I hope that mix-up or miscommunication that happened last year doesn't happen again. So, these student athletes have an opportunity to compete in the district tournament. I would like to say congratulations to those of our professional teaching staff that were, that will be nominees for the Macomb County Teacher of the Year. This is a highly prestigious award. And when I asked earlier, that just wanted people to understand that these individuals are being nominated, are being nominated by their peers and not by the Superintendent or by the Board. But in fact, by their peers that work with them on a daily basis. And it's a big honor to be nominated by one's peers for Teacher of the Year Award or consideration for Teacher of the Year. So, I'd say kudos to those nominees, and good luck. I'd say kudos to my colleagues, Mr. Brule, Ms. Escalante, Ms. Walker, for volunteering of your time, not only at the board table, but to run programs that involve our students and give them, that are giving them something extra that they probably would not have been able to have, had it not been for your volunteerism. So, we appreciate that, Mr. Brule, with the Travel Club, Ms. Escalante with the Boosters Club, and the Spanish Club, Ms. Walker with the Key Club. Thank you very much for, for your time, extra time that you're putting in to the district for our students. To Mr. Davis, Mr. Downing, Mr. Petty, I'd say congratulations. An outstanding job by these young men. These are, there are some of them, some of them are athletes, but all of them are scholars and good students. And it showed by their participation in, you know, most, most students, even me, if I was in probably 11th or 12th grade, you're talking about do something with the FBI. Uh-uh. No, no, no. I'm not, no, no, no. I'll pass on that one, so... But for them to get that exposure, I know it was a great experience for them. And kudos out to those young men for being willing to be, put themselves in a position to be invited to participate in those type of programs. That means that somebody is seeing something in those young men, and they're getting it done in the classroom. We've had some talk around the table tonight because of incidents that's happened. Unfortunately, an incident happened in Florida recently. This isn't the first time, and this district has not stood in the mud and not done anything over, over time that these, these things have happened before. But anytime it happens, it brings about more heightened awareness of it. And it brings the troops back together to reassess, to reevaluate, to reformulate, to, you know, to see if we can put ourselves in a position. Because you can't prepare for all the scenarios and situations out there. You can just prepare yourself the best you can and hope that if that situation ever happens, you know, protocols are in place and people know what to do and know what to give, and how, and how that all rolls out. So, again, as my colleague has stated, you know, the port, the safety of your students that come to these, through these walls and these doors are highly paramount, important to everybody who sits, not only sits at this table, but everybody who, who works and is a part of this district is, it's all important to us also. Those are my comments. The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Some move?
Moved by Mr. Monk to adjourn.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing is seen, none. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brule?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Meeting adjourned.